We will now call the common council meeting of August 20th, 2024 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Lurk.
Here.
Ritz.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
And Alderman Guzekowski is excused.
Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Leslie, you want to start us off?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We got to go back a little bit to do the minutes. We're looking at 7/16/2024. So if everybody take few moments. When you're satisfied, there's no errors, omissions, corrections, or discussion, motion.
Marshall moves to approve the minutes of July 16th, 2024.
Lurk, seconds. Roll call.
Alderman, Lurk.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Stays.
And under recognition, we will start with the first one, and as a resolution, commendation to Jeff White, retiring treatment plant operator. Catherine, would you please read that into record?
Certainly. Resolution number 12513-082024, resolution of commendation to Jeff White. Whereas Jeff White began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on March 2nd, 1987, as a utility service worker in the distribution department of the water and sewer utility. And whereas Jeff became the first utility service worker, treatment plant relief operator on November 13th, 1989, filling in at the treatment plant whenever needed. And whereas Jeff transferred to the treatment plant as a treatment plant operator on December 8th, 1991. And whereas Jeff's contributions went far beyond his job description and his knowledge of the treatment plant is unparalleled. And whereas Jeff's legendary maintenance and special project skills saved the utility a significant amount of money over the years. And whereas Jeff's impact went beyond his technical expertise, always being willing to share his knowledge and mentor newer operators. And whereas Jeff's patience and dedication to perfection helped his colleagues grow in their roles. And whereas on April 4th, 2024, Jeff retired from his position as treatment plant operator after serving 37 years with the city of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek that for and on behalf of the citizens of Oak Creek, sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Jeff White for his 37 years of dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Jeff White and his family in his retirement years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and the city clerk be and is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Jeff White, passed and adopted this 20th day of August, 2024.
Thank you, Catherine. And with us is Mike Sullivan from Water Utility.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mike?
I just want to really kind of throw the honor on Jeff. He was an amazing employee. He knows so much about our treatment plant and so good as the resolution says, so good at fixing things, sort of engineering on the fly and figuring out what a problem, what a solution would be, and it was always very, very high quality work. He's someone that's really going to be messed around there. And like I said, his knowledge is unparalleled at the treatment plant, for sure. He's a great individual. We're very happy to see him retired, but we are sorry to lose him.
Excellent. Council, anybody want to say a few words on Jeff's behalf? You know, I just want to kind of bring up Jeff is one of these workers, 37 years. He served this city and probably unnoticed for most of his career outside that plant. But to the residents of this city, it doesn't go unnoticed because of his expertise, his skill, we had the best wa-- we still have the best water going in southeastern Wisconsin, if not the state and country for years on end. And that's really due to his dedication and tireless work effort. So on behalf of the city, the common council, and all the residents, just want to wish Jeff a long, happy retirement, and it's well deserved. So if we could, motion on item four.
I'll move to approve resolution 12513-082024, resolution of commendation to Jeff White, retiring treatment plant operator.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lurk.
Aye.
And item five is consideration of a proclamation of congratulations to Catherine A. Rosky, the 2023 Oak Creek Citizen of the Year. I'd normally have Catherine read that in the record, but it's kind of awkward, so I am going to have older person, Marshall, do it.
Council proclamation 24-04, congratulations to Catherine A. Rosky, 2023 Oak Creek Citizen of the Year. Whereas the city of Oak Creek Citizen of the Year Committee conducts an annual search for the person who, in its judgment, is most deserving of acknowledgement because of loyalty, unselfish, and patriotic service to the community. And whereas the city of Oak Creek's Citizen of the Year Committee has selected Catherine A. Rosky as its 2023 Citizen of the Year, for which she will be duly honored at a recognition dinner on Friday, August 23rd, 2024. And whereas Catherine A. Rosky has four children, Christopher, Molly, Maxwell, and Jaclyn, and two grandchildren, Mackenzie and Ella. And whereas Catherine has been a resident of Oak Creek for 21 years, and the impact she has made continues to make on the Oak Creek community cannot be overlooked. And whereas Catherine is employed by the city of Oak Creek for 12 years and has been the city clerk since 2012, committed to the civic duty of ensuring the residents and citizens of Oak Creek, Wisconsin are treated with respect and dignity. And whereas Catherine dedicated 10 years to the USO Wisconsin, volunteering and eventually becoming a board member and the first woman board president for the USO Wisconsin, spending countless hours working to enhance the quality of life of the U.S. Armed Forces personnel and their families. And whereas, over years of parenting, served as Girl Scout leader for a combined 17 years and Boy Scout leader for four years. And whereas Catherine served as Citizens of Oak Creek as board member on the National Night Out and Crime Stopper boards, assisting with planning and executing the annual National Night Out events to strengthen neighborhood spirit and police community relationships. And whereas Catherine served on the 128th Air Refueling Wing Civic Dinner Dance Committee for six years, assisting and executing an event that brings people from around the state, including military personnel, local dignitaries, business leaders, and citizens supporting our local military. And whereas Catherine volunteered with the Civil Air Patrol and was recognized for her service for outstanding work. And whereas Catherine volunteers at many of the city's special events each year, including cafe, cornhole tournament, beer gardens, runs and walks, and many others. And whereas Catherine continues to strive for service excellence through education, graduating from the UW Extension Civil Leadership Academy for Vibrant Communities, Brave Angels Civil Leadership Workshops. And whereas through her commitment and passion for making a difference in the community by giving herself, giving of herself hours of community service, she is truly deserving of this recognition. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek hereby congratulate Catherine A. Rosky on being selected the 2023 Oak Creek Citizen of the Year. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting at the city clerk be, and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Catherine A. Rosky, passed and adopted this 20th day of August, 2024. I'll send it to you.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. Council members, anything on Catherine?
I just like to add Catherine is instrumental to us as council members. You can call her and she is there at the drop of a dime. I could not do what I did for the city without her.
Steve?
I just want to note that many years ago, I went to Catherine with this idea of a shred event. And I just said, hey, this is something we can do. And she took that idea and ran with it and got sponsors. And, you know, it went for, I don't know, five, six, seven years over various locations. And it was a great, great thing for the city that she, that she just took upon herself to manage amongst a ton of other things she was doing.
Greg?
Obviously, the proclamation says so much about her, but I wanted to just thank her for everything she does. Obviously, what Lisa said, when I started here, she's kind of my go-to expert on anything. Questions, I reach out. So I appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Ditto. Thank you, and congratulations.
Jan?
Catherine, you know, the resolution speaks for itself. Community is a better place for you being here. Look forward to celebrating with your brother.
Well, I'll just chime in. I'll keep it short. I agree, this, this actually doesn't even do justice. She does a lot of things behind the scenes here that the general public doesn't know. Elections. Our elections go off flawlessly, not only due to Catherine's expertise, but the management of her crew, her poll workers. She's always, always looking for poll workers. She helps train them. She's the liaison for me at ICC. Truth be known, she does most of that work at the ICC for the city of Oak Creek in the representation of our city. She's an amazing woman, and Oak Creek is very fortunate to have her in the position that she's in. And as Steve said, when I come up with a goofy idea for a city event, whether she likes it or not, she's always on board with me. I always appreciate that, whether the good ones or bad ones. But she'll be the first one there volunteering, working late hours, and doing the whole deal. She's dedicated to her family. She has two great little granddaughters that I happened to meet at National Night Out, and they're kind of the unofficial advisors to the mayor off the record there. So they kind of told me that when they ran. They had a lot of suggestions for me. But anyways, Catherine, this is really well deserved, and I really like to see this when one of the Oak Creek towns really pulls this in. And I will be there on Friday. I'm coming back into town just for this. So I will be there to help celebrate with you. So congratulations on behalf of the city, the common council, and all the residents. We're all very proud of you. So if we can get a motion on item five?
Marshall, we move to accept the proclamation number 24-04, congratulations to Catherine A. Rosky, 2023 Oak Creek Citizen of the Year.
Lurk, seconds. Roll call.
Elderwoman Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lurk.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
And under new business, we are going to start with item six. It's informational. It's the 2024 Midyear Budget Monitoring Report. And with us is Max Gaggen.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Max Gaggen, Deputy City Administrator and Finance Officer. So before you tonight is our midyear budget monitoring report, so just kind of looking at the city's financial activities and position through midyear. So what you'll see in the presentation are charts and graphs, looking at our performance relative to 2024 midyear and 2023, just so we have some benchmarks as to our performance relative to last year, and really a focus on the major funds of the city and their revenue and expense activity. And those major funds being the general fund, solid waste fund, health insurance fund, EMS fund, capital improvements fund, and consolidated dispatch fund. So first and foremost, the general fund, it's the city's largest fund, about $35 million. And you can see in how the chart set up is on the revenues and expenditures, the dark blue being 2024 and the lighter blue being 2023. So you'll see that through six months, we've collected 53.1% of our revenue, and that's lagging behind last year, which is 64.2%. However, there are very valid explanations for this. Saw some more people paying their taxes with the July 31st installment, as well as, you know, we did have a historic increase in state shared revenue that was budgeted, and state shared revenue is given in July and November. So as well as we have a budgeted transfer to the Capital Projects Fund with the budget amendment that will occur at year end. So there are very good explanations why it's tracking behind where it was last year. And then you can see expenditures at 40% where we were at 45.5%. So again, very good position, and we'll get into a little bit more details. So a breakdown of our significant revenues in the general fund, you'll see, again, the property taxes are collected about 90%. Last year was about 91%, but we always get to 100%. It's just more of it kind of lagged into July and then settlement in August. You'll see other taxes are trending higher than last year. Tax revenue receipts are in a great position. Shared revenue, it looks like it's trending down, but again, the budget number was a lot higher with that historic increase, and we hadn't received much of it yet. So we do anticipate that coming forth. Our license and permit activity is just under 50% and it's trending quite a bit below last year. Just kind of looking into the detail, our building permit activity and that revenue is at its lowest point since 2015, so something I'm really monitoring. I know we have development activity. I know there are projects out there. It's just where they're in the phase or the cycle that they're still conceptual and they haven't really built permits yet. So I'm not overtly concerned, but something I'll just be monitoring for the next six months of the year because, you know, when those permits get pulled, value gets built, that ultimately trickles into your net new construction. So unfortunately, if this lag continues, that could be a poor net new construction figure for our 2026 budget. So something that I am monitoring pretty closely. You'll see the charges for service at 55%. Again, trending a lot lower than last year, but again, the anomaly being that in that budget amendment we did in June, we budgeted $306,000 for a tourism service contract, and that amount isn't going to get paid until latter in the year. And then lastly, commercial revenue is at 88%. That's largely interest earnings. So through the first six months of the year, the general fund is worth $1.2 million worth of interest, and we budget $250,000. So doing really well there, but we do expect interest rates to moderate in the next six months to the year. On the expenditure side, you'll see all of our major functions are under a 50% spend other than leisure services. Leisure services does include Recreation Department, and we do pay 100% of our contractual costs to the school district by June 30th of every year, so that's why it looks like it's trending higher. But you can actually see it's a little bit lower than past years. You'll see public safety at 43.4%. Again, still have some of those new positions authorized in the 24 budget that are vacant. And then the other ones are still in very good shape, at 48%. So just looking at a breakdown of it by department, you'll see that most are trending under that 50% straight line, other than the finance department, we're at 50.8 right now. And the reason for that is that all of our audit costs had occurred by June 30th, our audit opinion was issued July 1st. So we've wrapped up, you know, about $50,000 worth of audit costs in those first six months of the fiscal year. Otherwise, you'll see many departments at 45% or so. Some of them that are just personnel and very small budgets are right at that 50%, but overall, very good. You'll see the police departments at 42.8%. Again, they've had a lot of retirement separations as well as new positions, so tracking well below where they were last year. And then the second half of the general fund departments, you'll see the ones that are over are the streetlights division, so it's at 53.7%. Electricity costs, electricity rates went up on average about 11% right towards the end of last year. So something that didn't get reflected all the way through the budget. And then again, that recreation budget showing 93% spent, but we pay 100% of our costs to the school district for the joint platform through the first six months of the year. Overall, you'll see, again, that 40% spent in this inner fund is the $2 million that we budgeted to go to the Capital Projects Fund that will get done at the year. Looking at revenues for our other major funds, you'll see solid waste at 89%, and this fund is mostly tax levy based, so this is trending right at that 89, 90% that the tax levy is at. Our health insurance fund at 48%, so a little bit under a straight line budget, but still in decent shape. EMS at 70%. And again, very heavy in property taxes as well as does receive ambulance fee revenue. Ambulance fee revenue is well outpacing budget, so in good shape there. Capital Improvement Fund, a lot of this trending over budget is related to interest earnings, so that fund earned quite a bit of interest earnings as we've had a lot of cash sitting in that fund due to project delays. And Dispatch Fund is at 83%, again, mostly property tax. Looking at the expenditures for the major funds, really, most of them are under that 50% spend, which is what we would expect to see. Health is a little bit over, but you can see it's actually trending much better than last year through the first six months, in a much better position than it was last year. But still, we do have long-term structural concerns that we talked about our last meeting. And otherwise, the other funds are in good shape. And then just looking at utilities and fuel, so you can see our electricity costs at 51%. As I mentioned, there was an increase, so that's why it's trending higher. But water and sewers trending at 37%. I suspect this is more of a billing cycle issue than truly a reduced cost because rates haven't gone down. We did have a wetter summer, so maybe not as much water usage, but I think this evens out by year end. Natural gas costs are down 43%. You can see they were pretty high last year, just very mild winter. And then fuel prices have really moderated out or stabilized, so we've only spent 38% of that budget. Happy to answer any questions, common council member.
Questions for Max?
Yeah.
Questions? No. Max, this is really helpful, get these second quarter reports and really see how we're trending. And of course, budgets will be coming up, and we'll be setting that, and it's really a key tool going forward on it. It also really helps us to explain to the folks going forward the need for the city budget and reassessments every year and everything that goes with it when you look at reports like this. So thank you.
I would just like to add, thank you also. Very easy to follow, good comparatives.
That was informational. No action is needed. We are now going to take the addendum item, which is marked item 27, which is actually item 21. We will insert that behind item six, just for the scorecard. So if we could, we are going to go with that item, Finance Department Centralization Plan, as long as we have Max at the table.
Yeah. So thank you, Mayor. So just going to talk through kind of the finance department, give an update, where we're at, where we've been, and where we're heading. Certainly provide a background, talk a little bit about historical accomplishments, you know, how did we get to where we are today, what the council and community can expect moving forward, and then future items as well. Just a little bit of background, so the latest iteration of the five-year strategic plan that the common council adopted in May of 2023 included an objective to centralize and streamline city and utility finance and accounting functions. And this item, in some iteration or form, has been in a strategic plan since 2017. Really, this is the key item that we took the charge on and really helping us kind of build out the future of the finance department. And then in the fall of last year, the city administrator issued the Building Capacity and Resilience Plan in our organization plan, and that created the central business financial services portfolio. We had some short and long-term recommendations for the finance department and what our considerations Just want to walk through some historical accomplishments, kind of set the timeline of how we got to where we are today, all the work that's been done to get here and where we're heading. So in the summer of 2022, the utilities' accounting manager position became vacant, and certainly at that time, you know, we had to make a decision, do we just replace it in kind, or do we really try and act on the council's direction on the strategic plan, given that the opportunity to exist. You know, quite frankly, wasn't the greatest time for our department. My payroll person left three months earlier, and I didn't have a staff account. So it's really me, Christina, our now finance and accounting manager, and a three-month payroll person. So not the greatest of timing, but we recognize that you don't always get these type of opportunities that you really have to jump in. So that's where in that fall, we assumed the responsibility for the utilities' finance and accounting, primarily our assistant comptroller, Christina Strimsek, who's now the finance and accounting manager. And she spent many months really just learning the operation, their practices, procedures, separate financial system, so on and so forth. So really big undertaking for her to really dive in and get a better understanding of the utility's operations. So the real large benchmarks we had is in the fall and then the spring of 2023, preparing the utilities' budgets, their annual comprehensive financial report, which is their annual audit, and then the Public Service Commission report, which is done annually, which is not just a financial report, but operationally, things like meters and water mains, keeping track of it all. So those are kind of the really three large outputs that the utility does from a finance perspective, getting those accomplished. First year was a big undertaking, but certainly a pretty rewarding challenge for myself and Christina, just kind of learning that operation. And then transitioning to the summer and fall of 2023, we led the utilities' conversion to the city's BSN AERP system, Enterprise Resource Plan system. So essentially, that's like the finance, HR, payroll, accounting, software, building, licensing, everything. So the utility was on a separate system. And leading the conversion required us to have to modify some accounts because they were on a separate chart of account structure. So we couldn't just fit them in easily. We had to kind of work together and compromise and figure out solutions on how they can operate in the same system. But, you know, we recognize that all of us being on the same system would streamline a lot of processes, having to pay roll accounts payable, and we still have some of that today. But certainly, it presents the opportunity that we can streamline some of those functions in the future. We have seen, you know, certainly some rewards in the interim, you know, because we were doing separate payroll. For example, we had two systems with W2s. We had to file W2s to the federal government, we had to print them out and mail them in. And it's no longer an acceptable solution. So this was really the first year we were able to do electronic transmit all of that. Same with our 1095 forms for the IRS, where we were able to submit that electronically as well, because everything was all in one system, which was certainly a big undertaking to get the system up and running, but, you know, we're starting to see those dividends really pay off. And then kind of transitioning into the summer, so per the plan, we restructured into two divisions. One is the Finance and Accounting Division, led by Christina Strimsek, and the Treasury and Revenue Management Division, led by Sarah Kowinski, our city treasurer. And really spent since late May, early June, myself, Christina, and Sarah have been meeting on a weekly basis to really plan for the next logical step in our centralization, which was transitioning the utilities' accounting and support staff to that finance department. So this is just look at the reporting structure. Again, you can see the finance department. Now you can see the two divisions there. Finance and accounting will handle accounting, accounts payable, budgeting, debt management, payroll, many of the things that we had currently done, but also including the utilities' accounting, accounts payable, budget, debt management. And Treasury and Revenue Management, led by Sarah, certainly doing a lot of the same things she's already doing, treasury, investments, assessments, but she's taking on accounts receivable, so that's moving from the finance accounting side over to her because she's already doing the cash management, going to have her do the accounts receivable, as well as oversee the utility. Let's briefly talk through some of the next steps that we have. So one of the large things we're working on is transitioning banking services for the utility to Tri-City National Bank, which relies, which really streamlines some of the banking operations and reconciliations. One of the larger things that enables us to streamline our journal entries and accounts payables, receivables, and payrolls, so even though we operate in the same system, because we have two separate bank accounts, we have to separate, essentially operate independently because if we cross over banks, you know, then we would have to be doing transfers in between the banks to reconcile. So very much, we're in the same system, but we operate independent because we're at two different banks now, but with... But with the merger, we can then operate, and for example, if you do a journal entry, you can include the utilities' accounts or the city's accounts once the banks are, we're at the same bank. And then lastly, being with Tri-City will allow the utility customers to pay the utility bill at any of the four Tri-City locations in Oak Creek. So something that we have for our property tax bills right now, and about thirty percent of our property owners do that. So it's pretty widely utilized. This is something that is coming later in the year, given that we have four locations, it's a little bit difficult to coordinate amongst them. So that's why it's taken a little bit of time, but certainly, we just see that as enhanced customer service experience, if you can go to one of the four locations in town and make your payment. And then the second part is the Utilities Accounting and Finance, our support staff are transitioning to the Finance Department, relocating to City Hall on August twenty-sixth, so on Monday. And really what that's going to allow is that all city and utility payments can be processed at the same location, at the Civic Center Customer Service Counter. So kind of like a one-stop shop. If you do multiple types of business, you can do it all at the one customer service counter. We'll also have the drive-through drop box, so you have library books and utility payments. It's, drop boxes are right next to each other, so hopefully some synergies there. The additional resources do create some support for Treasuring and Revenue Management Division, including a backup for the city treasurer and revenue manager, which we really haven't had for the past year and a half. We've had some staff people that have helped out, but no one of a formal nature to really back up Sarah in what she does. And it really affords us the ability to cross-train personnel on critical functions. I have many of them listed, but, you know, certainly now that going from a department of four to essentially a department of eight, the ability to cross-train on things like utility billing and payroll, so that we're more resilient, you know, we recognize that. People, there's turnover, people retire, and having multiple people understand both city and utilities, finances, accounting, and utility billing and payroll is just going to make the organization more resilient. Next, just kind of want to talk and really give thanks and kudos to many departments who've been involved in this process. Certainly, our Finance Department staff, but also the Utility Department staff have been an excellent resource, just trying to understand the operation, understand how, you know, the interactions with customers go, trying to understand how many people come through counters, different types of questions, really instrumental in us kind of figuring out when this date would be, figuring out what are the frequently asked questions people are going to ask with a transition of this sort. So, and, you know, the reality is, there's a lot of things that I, myself, or Christina or Sarah, just don't know because we weren't as intimately involved with the operation for years, whereas, you know, they have some tenured staff who do. So certainly, it's been a good learning and educational experience for us. As with everything today, the IDP Department, critical, you know, one of the things that failed to mention earlier, but, you know, we were only able to move to the same ERP system because the prior three months IT spent transitioning all of the utilities, IT infrastructure onto the city's infrastructure, so new servers, computers, so on and so forth. So that was critical to get done in order for us to then transition to the ERP system, which allows us to make this transition with utility bill payment processing. But, you know, certainly, you know, big things they've been working on are, you know, we have new workstations going in, new software having to be installed, badge access, you know, plenty of things that, you know, I know Sarah and Christina have been working diligently on them. And Marketing and Public Relations Department, what you saw and what was included with the attachment was a communications plan, and that was primarily drafted by Leslie Flynn. She did an awesome job with it, so a very robust. We tried to hit every types of communications we can, so, you know, utility bills for the next three months are going to include an insert that says what the payment location is, that's social media posts, we've had some internal communications, we're going to have an article in the current, but really trying to spread the word as best we can. But, you know, the thing we all have to recognize is, are people still going to show up at the utility billing or the utility building and try and make a payment? Yes, that's a reality. You know, today, you can do your best to communicate and educate people, but unless it's right in front of their face, they may not know. So, but we're hoping that with the inserts, announcing the billing, payment, location change, that we can cut some of that off. And the reality is, if you look at our numbers, over eighty percent of our utility bills are paid electronically or through the lockbox, so the actual number of customers is not as large as what we think. And lastly, our Administrative Support Department, those individuals will be learning how to accept the payments for utility bills and how that software works and applying them to accounts. So certainly, utility staff is going to be doing that initially, but certainly, we want to cross-train other people on how to take payments. Again, there's more resilience there. And then lastly, just kind of talking about future items. So working on job descriptions for Sarah's position, as well as some of the utility staff transitioning over. Again, as I mentioned, enabling the customer bill payout at Tri-City locations, hopefully by December. And then we're going to start looking more internally, once the banks are on the same, at the same bank, kind of shifting around some utility-related tasks to our staff accountant, looking to eliminate accounts payables and receivable activity between the city and utility, and we can do that as a journal entry instead. So just for this group's perspective right now, if the city owes the utility money or vice versa, essentially, we, you know, we'll just, for the example being that the city owes the utility money, the utility sends us an invoice, we process its accounts payable, we cut a check, the check gets mailed there, they take the check, they receive it through their system, deposit it. That's the only way we can do it right now with two banks, whereas, moving forward, it would be processed in a single journal entry, probably with, you know, many other journal entries that we're just processing. So just thinking about how much time, energy, and effort that saves everyone is pretty significant. So I can tell you, my staff is most excited about some of these items because, you know, chasing around who owes who has been pretty complicated, especially on the financial statements, and it's really going to streamline that process. And then lastly, you know, certainly, we'll be evaluating the Finance Department's staffing needs, once kind of the immediate steps and future items are complete. As I mentioned, that accounting manager at the utility, it's vacant and it has been, so essentially, we've taken on the additional responsibilities in the department without filling that position now. But, you know, once kind of things settled and we figure out where we're at, then we'll evaluate and see if there's a need for a position and, you know, what type of position that would be, you know, most likely at a much lower level than at the manager level. All right, so happy to answer any questions? Common Council?
Questions for Max?
It was nice to see you taking some non-value-added activities out. That's great. You know, you don't get that many opportunities, I would think, to do that.
I have a question about electronic bill payment. Is that going to change as well for residents? They pay electronically with the bank change? I'm sorry, I'm just curious.
If you use Bill Pay through your bank, you would have to update it. If you use Utilities Third Payment Processor, so if you sign up directly through the utility website or the electronic bill pay, that won't change. But, you know, before that was offered, you know, there's Bill Pay through your bank where you tell them, pay these bills, yes, that will change. And that is part of the communications that has gone out. That is something we definitely want to make sure we get.
And that will be effective as of August twenty-sixth?
So we will actually be having both banks run simultaneously for at least three months, if not more, more likely six. We will be monitoring all the activity that goes through the old bank, and we're coming up with plans on it, figure out how to contact those specific customers if we're still having issues. Yeah, you can't just transition a bank and just open one, close another, because of that reason, you would have bounced back. You know, again, we have a lot of vendors that pay us as well through ECH, so if they don't update their records in time, so on and so forth. So, you know, that's going to really be Sarah's job, monitoring Chase Bank activity and figuring out what's still going there and really troubleshooting and figuring out how we can minimize that, to the point that we could get it.
Max, just on behalf of the council, I think, just one of the few expressions we really appreciate, the effort you took and your staff, Christina and Sarah, to develop a plan and carry this out, it really will make the entire organization a better thing in terms of serving the community. Your dedication to carrying this out has really been exemplary, so good job, thank you very much.
Chair?
I'd just like to add too, Max had mentioned the building blocks, and I'm going to wander just to touch, but bear with me, I don't do that as often anymore. Max had mentioned really the building blocks for this have been our current strategic plan and our past strategic plan and the council's vision for this topic. As part of our most recent strategic action plan, you know, we called for the draft, the building capacity and resilience in our organization plan. That's one component, and this is a precise implementation of one of those recommendations, as is the creation of the Marketing and PR Department, for example. And we wanted to share with you kind of the inventory of that. And before I get specifically into how important this move is, we've really been building capacity here for the last couple of years. We've really been building our organization, because one of the things we did before we started kind of reconnoitering the existing groups or work functionality processes, I just want to recall and take inventory with you all, just in the last couple of years, we've established a DPW wage progression and promotional opportunity, the same with the dispatch, we've invested in those groups. The Common Council adopted additional increases to employee time off. We added in bereavement leave, parental leave, in addition to just our general PTO bank. The Common Council created an emergency sick leave bank for our employees and seeded that. We, of course, just passed a historic two million dollar public safety staffing plan in recent year, in the recent year. And then we entered and talked about these things that have to do specifically with the building capacity and resilience plan. And this being, you know, creating the new Marketing and PR Department, we'll talk about the Tourism Services Agreement, talk a little bit with the infrastructure, land use, and community building portfolio. We will get a report similar to this to kind of see where that shook out, where we are at, and where we want to go moving forward, because you gave us a lot of freedom to begin implementing that plan, and we really do appreciate that. Specific to this, centralizing the Finance Department, again, you talked about this, I think in my job interview in two thousand sixteen, that this was a priority for the then-council, and it wasn't, it was not, not ever a priority for every council makeup moving forward. We've really pinned down the language in that strategic plan over time, and we called for, let's move to a central finance department and eliminate the overlap or just align, better align the finance and accounting resources in the city. It didn't get done until now. The timing was not right, but I have to say, I don't know, looking back and looking through the work, that I don't know if any of us can really appreciate how complicated it was. I don't know that we had the skills in the building to tackle this at any point in time in our history until this team came forward and tackled this major project. It wasn't done before, not because it didn't make sense, but because it was very hard. So I just really want to commend, when we talk about capacity building, what we learned through this process is, you know, specifically with, well, Max, I think we knew a little bit about you, but specifically with, with building capacity and Christina and Sarah coming from, you know, emerging leaders, some leadership potential in our organization to being leaders in our organization, that's building capacity too. And I want to say, this is, this was a forensic exercise. You know, Christina specifically learned the utility accounting system the last two years with, you know, not much to go on. We had an accounting manager for twenty-plus years, and then we had, you know, a short time person in that role. There's a thing about finance, when you're learning it and you're maybe experimenting a little bit, you also have to maintain one hundred percent accuracy in that process. And we've really, really achieved that. So I just want to thank, you know, Christina and Sarah for showing us that, you know, their leadership skills in our organization, we're really lucky to have them. But also, you know, the three utility staff, accounting staff and support staff coming over to be in this mix of this larger department, you know, they've been absolutely cooperative, eager to take on new roles and assignments, and, you know, we think that they have a lot to give our organization that we didn't know about as well. So kudos to just the whole group for bringing this together. We're physically relocating people now, and it's a physical change that people are going to notice, but as you can see, the work's been going on, the difficult work has been going on for a couple of years now. So just thank you to the whole group for, you know, really pulling this one over to a point of implementation.
Anyone else? No, just want to say thanks, Max. I don't want to go on and on, but as Max pointed out, this just didn't affect the Finance Department. He was tangled up in it, marketing, you name it. It was really a team effort here, and it doesn't happen overnight. This has been a multi-year process, as Andrew and Max said. And in the long run, we will be more efficient and better, better purveyors of the city's monies coming in. So thank you all, and thanks to your staff, appreciate it. So there's no motion needed on that one either. So we will move right along, and we, that was informational. Item seven, that will get us to consideration of approving a purchase of ninety-sixty South Fifth Avenue for the purpose of blight elimination. Alex, like, will you say you're taking this one?
Sure. Equally exciting topic, thank you, Mayor. This council has seen such resolutions before, and specifically in May, the council approved the letter of agreement to purchase the property at ninety-sixty South Fifth Avenue from Union Pacific Railroad. This is part of the overall lakefront development, of course, and a critical piece in terms of city being able to avail itself of a statutory local government unit liability exemption. By statute, this is one of those pieces. So if there is contamination on the property, if there is going to be something that has been pre-existing by a contributor that is not us, then this is a necessary step where we can put ourselves in a better position as we move forward. So it really is an important piece that we have available as a municipality in terms of remedies, environmental investigation, and any cleanup that might be necessary. So it is just that, as the title of the resolution is, confirming that we are approving the purchase of this property for the purpose of blight elimination. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Motion on seven.
Marshall moves to adopt Resolution one-two-five-one-four-dash-oh-eight-two-oh-two-four, a resolution approving the purchase of ninety-sixty South Fifth Avenue for the purpose of blight elimination.
Hold on a second. Roll call?
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And item eight is to consider a motion to approve the Tourism Commission Services Agreement. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor, and council. Really, you know, happy and thrilled to be at this point with this project, if you will, as well. It's been a long journey here to get to this point, and I would consider it, if you'd afford me one silly analogy, and I'll keep going before anybody objects. I really think this is not a checkpoint here tonight, this is really a mile marker, and, you know, we have a lot of miles on the highway ahead of us, but I think this just provides for-
And, you know, we have a lot of miles on the highway ahead of us, but I think this just provides for a lot of smooth, much smoother pavement moving forward for these functions in the city versus what you might see in the rearview mirror. But just by way of background, the Tourism Commission was established in 2015, really began meeting in early 2016 to handle the city's, a portion of a certain hotel motel room tax dollars and to really help generate activity and interest in the community, social engagement in the community, and ultimately attract visitors to our community. We did, I mean, you've seen our social calendar just, you know, be expanded on tenfold in the last decade or so. We've tried many things, we've experimented, and we haven't gotten everything right. But certainly, from effort across our organization, from the D P W to public safety, to our communications team, to the people specifically tasked in these tourism-related roles, to the city clerk's office, so on and so forth. They really got the message and the vision that the mayor, mayors and councils had for this community and that celebrating and being together and welcoming others in to see what we have was really critical moving forward and kind of in terms of our social calendar. So roles weren't always perfect, I would say. The relationship among the city and the Tourism Commission as a very independent body weren't always consistent. But we trudged along and did very well because of the skilled people that we had leading at the time and throughout that time. Fast forward again to building blocks. In May of 2023, the council adopted the new strategic action plan. And as you see in the staff report, there are several goals in two critical success factors that perfectly overlap among the city and the Tourism Commission. They're very much overlapping goals and vision for how we want to represent our community, how we want to portray our community, how we want our residents to feel about our community, and how we want to attract visitors to our community. And it really put into gear then, along with the draft, the, excuse me, the Building Capacity and Resilience Plan, the creation of a new marketing and P R department. We walked through a long period of conversation. And as you see in your outline in your common council report, a long series of conversations with the Tourism Commission. How can we promote a more formal operational framework to fulfill the needs of the city and to fulfill the needs of the Tourism Commission moving forward? And, you know, of course, we created the marketing and public relations department. As that conversation was going and we were recruiting, the Tourism Commission decided that the best path forward, after hearing from a lot of perspectives, if you recall the makeup of our Tourism Commission as an alderperson, a resident, right now it's a current business owner, it's a marketing expert in her private life, in her, in her private profession, and it's a hotelier. And all of those perspectives were kind of thrown in and diced up over a series of meetings in the last fall. And we ultimately arrived at a majority of the commission wanting to move in this direction. We've set up the marketing and P R department, and we're building that out. And so all of these things are coming together really in this agreement for how we can provide a more operational, a formal operational framework to help the city and the Tourism Commission meet their goals as they so often overlap. So with that, the council and the Tourism Commission have put some pieces in place over the last few months to enable this agreement to move forward. Specifically, I'm talking about the budget amendments that both the commission and the common council adopted that really enabled this and kind of put the revenue and the expenditure framework together. So really, this is the final piece of a new platform moving forward. And the Tourism Commission Services Agreement is rather simple. It tried to capture the goals and concepts and the numbers that were discussed with the Tourism Commission over the many months. And I think we did that in a very simple way that allows us a little bit of flexibility, both groups, the Tourism Commission and the city, to do some more of that experimentation, but certainly allow and recognize the, the resources that are required to achieve those goals and where they may come, where they may come from and the funding sources for those. So with that, the Tourism Commission Services Agreement is really a one-year agreement with an automatic renewal. Excuse me, it goes through December of 2025, but then an automatic one-year renewal. You can see the fiscal impact in the C C R. One thing that we specifically wanted to call out in this agreement, though, is, and the city acknowledges this, and it was something I referenced in the last agenda item. The Tourism Commission and the programming that we do for the community and for potential visitors really relies on many departments, all departments, let's just call it all departments. And I think the Tourism Commission really acknowledged over the course of time that there is a lot of things the city can contribute to this business unit that duplicating really would not make a ton of sense to do and going on parallel paths as opposed to a path kind of in the same car. So with that, we are here this evening to discuss the Tourism Commission Services Agreement. We'd be happy to have any, of course, answer any questions, but have any conversation or give some additional insight into that outline and those 15 or so months of conversation. But we're very eager to hear what you have to say and hopefully move forward in this more formal fashion among the city and the Tourism Commission moving forward.
If I would add a few points, as the chairman of the Tourism Commission, basically, we had a make-buy decision. We don't have that that often in public sectors. And we could either make a legal, accounting, finance, you know, administrative components to tourism, or we could buy those services. And we elected the, certainly the more fiscally conservative route, and that was to buy those services. And that's what this contract is all about. This allows us to tap into the resources the city has and use them as we need instead of, you know, having a retainer with, with a law firm, for example, just for tourism. Or an accounting firm. We got Max and team. And if you look at the tourism attendees, really reflects what Andrew just said. We have Leslie, Catherine, sometimes Max, sometimes the mayor, Andrew. So a lot of city participants to help us as we're making our path forward to try to bring room nights into the city.
Thank you, Jim. Further discussion?
Any, sorry.
Yeah. Go ahead, Ken.
I'm not sure where you're going with if you're ripping up or not. I just want to acknowledge the fact that Andrew and all you folks involved in this process. This has been an incredibly strategic and extensive and time-consuming effort to examine this. It's a very peculiar piece of legislation to make sure we're adhering to the nuances intended by the state. And I think this agreement will serve this community very well. Obviously, we have spent a great deal of time and effort making this, this piece of our, the city's business very strategic and very conducive to the community side of, of our community. And driving the cohesiveness of what we're doing and also adhering to the law of the legislation. So we really appreciate the amount of time and effort that has gone into formulating a plan and strategy to implement it and move forward here finally, after a extensive review and implementation process. And it really is time to adopt this and move forward and get on with the business, making this community.
Thank you, Ken. There's no further discussion?
Ritz will move to approve the Tourism Commission Services Agreement.
Lorik seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item nine is consideration of a motion to concur with the mayor's reappointment of Jose Alva to the Board of Health for a three-year term, which would expire September of 2027. Any discussion on this? Jose has been serving, he's actually the chair of our health, health committee, Board of Health, and he's been with us, if memory serves me, 2012, 14. There's no discussions, questions? Motion please on nine.
Marshall will move to concur with the mayor's reappointment of Jose Avila to the Board of Health for a three-year term expiring September of 2027.
Lorik seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
And I did speak with Jose, and I expressed the thanks from the council and the city on behalf of serving. This is all volunteer work just by residents, and we really do appreciate his input there. Next, number 10 is fire, and it's consideration of a resolution approving the acceptance of the assistance to the firefighters grant, the A F G award for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus, SCUBA. Here's Chief Kresick to explain all those acronyms.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Kresick, Fire Chief. Tonight requesting your consideration for adoption of a resolution that approves the Assistance to Firefighter Grant Award for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus. Little bit of background about this, back in '23, understanding that our current S C B As were over 10 years old, two safety standards old, we applied for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. We did not receive the award during that fiscal year. As preparations began for the '24 budget cycle, we did submit a C I P with the understanding that we would again submit a grant for the self-contained breathing apparatus. That grant submittal was in conjunction with three other municipalities. It's a strategic move. The inclusion of other municipalities from Milwaukee County shows a standardization of equipment. Three departments with similar equipment issues participating in the grant just provided us a better opportunity to receive that award. We were fortunate and grateful to receive the award with the notification within the last 45 days. With that, with the understanding that this is in conjunction with three other municipalities, Oak Creek is serving as the fiscal agent for that grant award. So tonight, we're presenting a resolution that does acknowledge the acceptance of the award, which I'll touch on in a little bit, along with the requirement for a 10% copay as part of the funding award from the A F G. That 10% is split between the four participating municipalities based on the inventory and the cost of the stock. Each of the municipalities will be ordering a different amount of equipment, obviously different sized departments, so that 10% copay will be factored based on the equipment you're ordering. Also, in the fiscal obligation associated with this resolution, we're looking, the grant awarded us 27 units, 27 S C B A. Our inventory is 36. We did put in for 36 units. Grant awards are typically for only frontline apparatus. So the remaining nine units, which serve as our backups, replacement when PCs are out of service, and training tools when members are in class, would be a cost spared by the department. So the fiscal obligation with this resolution would be a C I P that we are presenting as part of the '25 budget, acknowledging the purchase of nine additional S C B A to round out our inventory. With that, one note, this item was on the last council meeting. There are timelines associated with grant awards. We were up against the wall. Preliminary acceptance needed to be made for that grant because the timelines would have fell outside this next meeting. So that preliminary notice to the feds was made for acceptance. Each of the participating municipalities has expressed to me through their fire chiefs the desire to continue with the grant. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Chief Kresick? I think very good for the city, without a doubt. You know, we're getting a substantial amount of equipment replaced here on a grant, which is quite amazing. So remaining nine, I have no issues whatsoever. And this is gear that is essential to a firefighter.
Absolutely.
Surprised as a SCUBA diver, surprised it's not as, you know, SCUBA or something, overwrought, out of water.
Mining industry, kind of a beer towards the mining industry with the equipment.
So if there's no further discussion, questions, motion on 10, please.
I will move to approve Resolution 12512-082024 approving the acceptance of the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Award for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Item 11 concerns engineering and its consideration to establishing and a determination for the necessity for acquisition of lands for public street purposes, temporary easements for grading and authorizing negotiations for such acquisition and authorizing condemnation if necessary. This is a second and sixth district, and I will hand that over to Matt Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor and Common Council. Matt Sullivan, Assistant City Administrator and City Engineer. Before you is that resolution. If you recall, this project started back in 2022 when we did an analysis on it for alternatives for the intersection. We came back with a few alternatives, one being stop sign, one being signal, and the roundabout and do nothing. Through the process of determination with Bob Waka and Common Council, it was recommended that we move forward with the roundabout design. Part of this design is the need for real estate and temporary easements for grading. This process under this resolution gives us the authority to basically take the plat that has been provided in front of you and record that with Milwaukee County and move forward with real estate acquisition condemnation if necessary as we get to that point, which we can get through the eminent domain process. And this is very important, it allows us to start moving forward, relocation utilities, and going forward with the intersection design or actual construction, which we're anticipating to happen next year. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Matt? Not at all. All right. Motion on 11, that was.
Lorik moves to adopt Resolution number 12511-082024, a resolution establishing a determination of necessity for acquisition of lands for public street purposes, temporary easements for grading, authorizing negotiation for such acquisition and authorizing condemnation if necessary.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Elderwoman Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
And item 12 is consideration creating Section 3.08 of the municipal code relating to responsible bidders. Matt?
I'll be taking this again. Thank you, Mayor. Before you is that ordinance to create the responsible bidder ordinance within our municipal code. This is a pretty strategic, I guess, ordinance that we're trying to adopt here. This allows us a lot of flexibility when we're going through our grant writing and funding, especially through federal or state. A lot of the requirements do ask us to have responsible bidder ordinances within our own code. This would not be anything different than what we already do. This is more of needed in writing and having it within our code to point to when we go through that process. Once again, I'd actually like to thank Melissa, she did a big heavy lift on this one as far as preparing it and working together to come to this conclusion. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. I know there's a lot within the document, but most of it really does follow state statutes in accordance with our responsible bidder requirements.
Questions for Matt?
Steve? Mine is, excuse me, mine's more of a comment regarding, under responsible bidder criteria, Section C, Paragraph 10. I think in my, my opinion, as my former professional opinion, as working with the Department of Homeland Security, and as my current position as an alderman, which would be to protect the city from any adverse actions, whether it be civil or bad press in the media, whatever. I feel that Paragraph 10 is a little weak with regards to an employer who could wiggle their way out of certain requirements for employees because it's kind of general and it is. it isn't really specific. And I would like to ask, this may be somewhat controversial, but I'm going to ask anyways, with regards to Paragraph 10, the employees who will perform work on the project for the contractor must be properly classified as employees, which is kind of general, or independent contractors under all applicable laws. My opinion would be to say, including, but not limited to, compliance with federal immigration laws pertaining to a non-US citizen's authorization to be employed in the United States. And an employer can use the E-Verify system, they may or may not, I mean, they're required to fill out I9s, but, you know, maybe they will, maybe they won't. But I feel that language absolutely positively ascertains that anybody who, any company who has employees doing work for the city are authorized to be employed. You know, they don't have to be citizens, they just have to have a work authorization to be employed in the United States. That's my comment.
Okay. So when they say classified as employees, there's different classifications of employees, it can be apprentice, journey worker, electrician, plumber, roofer, that's generally what it is there when it comes to independent contractors, but Steve, you're right on E-Verify and the whole thing, so.
I just, you know, E-Verify isn't mandatory, I mean.
No, it isn't, it isn't mandatory, and again, it doesn't mean that somebody here that's, has proper documentation and is working here can't work for that employer as well.
So. And I know, was involved in numerous investigations that involve fictitious social security cards and even green cards, but that's a whole nother, you know.
Well, that.
Ball of wax, but my opinion is that, well, let's just make sure that the people who are working for companies that are under contract with the city are allowed to be working. You know, I would hate to think that, you know, taking the worst-case scenario, that somebody's doing a job and then all of a sudden they find out that, you know, half the workforce is, they have problems with, and then the city says, well, look at the city hired a contractor who's half the workforce is not supposed to be working in the country, and then we look bad. So I'm just trying to protect, protect the city. And that isn't much to ask, really.
Melissa?
Lean to legal.
You kind of worked on this.
I'm going to lean to legal counsel on the language for that, or if it.
Right, thanks. Looking at Matt too, and certainly deferential to, you know, Alderman Kirkowski's comments, if there were some suggestion, I would just say from where I sit, having worked on this and looked at other samples and reviewing the statute, and candidly, if one of the pieces, and I think it was one of the cornerstones of why we wanted to bring this forward with interest in trying to avail the city of certain available funding, whether it be state or federal, I would just submit that I would want to take a closer look to make sure that any language isn't limiting us. But I absolutely agree with your practical read and literal read of that subsection, Alderman Kirkowski. It is generic seeming, but I think that my comfort level is just that it indicates that it has to be consistent with all applicable laws. So it's broad and open-ended, and at the end of the day, the comfort level that, from where I sit, advising the city in our best interests, it's just that, at the end of the day, we really have that discretion. It is responsible bidder piece. So if we are looking for more information, if there's something that needs to be clarified, if there's anything that, you know, gets Matt any concern, or if it's going to be DPW reviewing some type of bid, it's the same piece. So I don't want to be repetitive, but hopefully that makes sense. I mean, I think that I'm always looking at that comfort level for the projection of the city, and I did, in reviewing this, think the same thing, but the more that we put potentially additional characteristics or attributes, my concern is that we might be limiting ourselves. So, either way, happy to take a closer look if the council is thinking that we'd want to make any revisions, but I'd want to make sure that I explore that to ensure that we're not limiting ourselves.
Well, I guess I'd like to hear what the other council members think, or the mayor.
Yes, I'm going off Melissa's expertise on this one. I didn't necessarily have an issue the way it's written, as she stated with the wording of "under all applicable laws." And I would assume the liability or the, I guess, determining what falls under classified as employee would fall on the burden of the employer. So I guess I didn't have an issue.
I was going to make that same comment.
And actually, it's state law covers most of that. Lisa? Yeah?
I believe we have coverage under the phrase the applicable laws, but, and I mean, the onus, obviously, we're not going to, we'd have to have a reason go down in the weeds as far as the language. It would come, it would be an issue before that got that far.
I think it comes down to, you know, our responsibility also, as far as doing our due diligence as we go through this, much like we do now. A lot of times we require that contractors do provide some form of basically certifications and that. So that's not to say that Alderman Kirkowski's point is not well-taken, but a lot of the stuff that we do already pertains to a lot of the requirements under the law. If Melissa feels it necessary to move forward further, we'd be more than happy to explore those with her.
Once it's happy.
And I think another point to be well-taken, I, this is one of the things we've been trying to do strategically, is our grant writing services. We're actually in the midst of reviewing 22 proposals that we just received, so it's kind of all aligns itself, I guess, with our future in 2025 as far as trying to secure grants and different funding through the federal and state levels.
Okay. Well, then I'll just say that.
Yeah.
My comments were intended to may have a discussion over that matter, over my concerns, and if Melissa's happy with the language, then I'm good. My intent was to make sure we put on the record my concerns and.
Well thought, thank you. Okay, motion on 12.
I'll move to approve ordinance 3108, creating Section 3.08 of the municipal code relating to responsible bidders.
Lorik seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And item 13 is consideration of an ordinance relating to general street design standards and to repeal and recreate Section 14.120subHsub1 and Sub 2 of the municipal code. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. This is that ordinance to repeal and recreate that section. This is a long-term or a long-time coming, I guess, so to speak. This has been a topic of discussion amongst staff, developers, and other participants throughout the years that have been here for 19. The primary reason and constraints within this code are the limits to the number of lots on a cul-de-sac or the length of a cul-de-sac. Those were particularly 500 feet for length maximum, or 15 lots. That tends to be very constrained as far as development within our city, especially since the state that we're in, we're getting to the point where we're doing a lot of infill, a lot of the larger tracts of land that are developed now are either constrained by environmental or ownership or different reasons that full connection or limiting factors are there. This basically allows the contractor developers to go at about half mile in length. You have to meet the new standards that we put in there, which are water flow and duration for fire protection and other means for safety that are governed under the National Fire Protection Code. Specifically tried to do that to make sure that we were addressing the safety aspect for the residents and future development, but also given flexibility to the developer to come with a number of tracts of land. So, I mean, to be more open about it, down on Elm and 10th, there's a large tract of land, five acres or so that now could be developed, longer have to have two points of access. There's areas up on Bonita, within the city, that have probably four or five different pieces of land that people have tried to put together, but there's one person holding out, now becomes developable. There's areas down off Elm, near Oakwood Lakes, that could be developed now. So there's several different larger tracts of land that now become available with this, gives us a little more flexibility to work with our developers and future areas for subdivisions. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions on this matter.
Questions?
Oh, this is, this is needed and the old code has run its course, I think, in terms of being useful to the city. So we're in a different state of Delaware at this point in time, and I think it's a good change to the underlying development code.
If I just could add, Mayor, you know, Matt's really touching on this, but the question that was posed was, why can we have a multifamily development with 300 units at the end of a cul-de-sac, but we're limiting ourself to 15 single-family lots? Problem statement, right? Don't know, don't have a great answer for that. And it was about the safety, and we heard this historic references to the 15 lots or the 500 feet, and we couldn't really make that congruent with the times. So we had the staff take a look at this, and ironically, or just because of the nature of the policy change here, we're also hitting a bunch of other strategic goals we've talked about over the course of the years, and that's really balancing our housing portfolio and maintaining a strong mix of single-family owner occupied housing as well as multifamily housing in the community. And in 2019 or 20, that was 2021 or 2022, we created a inventory of available, and really through a ranking score, we did a big white paper on handling the single-family lot demand in the community moving forward, and how can we garner more single-family home, buildable home lots? And this does that. Those few examples, there's several examples in that report, the few examples that Matt gave, predominantly a way to balance and grow the single-family homeownership piece of our housing portfolio, which is really critical moving forward for us. So this is, this is a pretty intriguing and enabling policy to achieve those goals.
Hey Greg?
I'm just curious if there's a reason that temporary cul-de-sacs have a minimum diameter noted, but the permanent ones do not? Is that something that's outlined in the Engineering Design Manual or the NFPA Manual?
That is correct, it's in the Engineering Design Manual as far as the permanent cul-de-sac design requirements.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no more discussion, motion on 13, please.
Marshall will move to approve ordinance number 3109 relating to the general street design standards and to repeal and recreate Section 14.120subHsub1 and 2 of the municipal code.
Gale's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
And item 14 is the License Committee, I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski. Thank you, Mayor, I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the items on tonight's Common Council report. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns? Seeing none, Kirkowski can make a motion to approve the various license requests as listed on the August 20th, 2024 License Committee Report.
Ritz will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
And item 15 is our vendor summary report. So we're going to consider a motion to approve the July 31st, 2024 vendor summary report, amount of $1,821,534.91. You do have the report with you, so please take a look at it, and if you have any questions, just please take the floor. And when you're satisfied there's no questions or concerns or discussion, motion?
It will move to approve the July 31, 2024 vendor summary report in the amount of $1,821,534.91.
Marshall's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
And item 16 is consideration of a motion to approve the August 14th, 2024 vendor summary report in the amount of $910,100. As stated before, please take a look. If there's any questions or discussion, please take the floor.
Can you, can you tell me, because I haven't, Bobby Decker LP for bond refunds, what, you know what that is really?
When we have a development project, we take a bond for road improvements or utility improvements, hold that to ensure that work gets done, and then once we accept the bond.
Bobby Decker's just an entity or a person?
I wouldn't be able to specifically tell you who Bobby Decker is.
I think related to folks at 8100 Properties.
Decker, yeah, Decker Properties.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, typically if, like.
Makes sense.
It's like we take different bonds, one for water.
It's covered in chapter 12, right?
Different things like roadway, water, sewer, so.
We're good.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, motion please.
Marshall will move to approve the August 14th, 2024 vendor summary report in a total of $910,100.
Gale's second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
And item 17 is consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, to discuss the following. Item A, Section 19.85sub1subE to consider a wholesale water agreement with the City of Franklin. And item B, Section 19.85sub1subE to consider the claim of Steve Kazak regarding the property at 8220 South 20th. President Gale?
Thank you, Mayor. Gale moves to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, to discuss the following. A, Section 19.85sub1subE, to consider a wholesale water agreement with the City of Franklin. B, Section 19.85sub1subE, to consider the claim of Steve Kazak regarding the property at 8220 South 20th Street.
Marshall's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
We shall now convene in closed session and resume at its conclusion. All right. We will now entertain a motion to reconvene into open session.
Mayor Gale moves to reconvene in the open session.
Marshall's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
And item 19 is to consider a motion to take action, closed session item.
Thank you, Mayor. Gale will move to deny the claim of Steve Kazak regarding a May 7th, 2024 incident at the property at 8220 South 20th Street. Yep, that's what I said.
Okay. Get a second? Lorick seconds. Uh, roll call.
Alderman Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
And item twenty is consideration of a motion to approve the wholesale water purchase and sale agreement between Oak Creek and Franklin.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Gail will move to approve the wholesale water purchase and sale agreement between the Oak, between Oak Creek and Franklin, subject to minor and/or technical changes that do not substantially change the agreement.
Marshall's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Uh, and that will bring us up to adjournment. Uh, announcements, we have Bearin Square this week.
Tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night. Um, and then of course, if you are so interested, Catherine will be honored at the Oak Creek Community Center, August twenty-third, beginning at five-thirty PM. Um, tickets are still available, so if you'd like to join us, um, please take part. Uh, anything else going on in the city? Farmer's Market as usual, continuing on. Nine o'clock Saturday morning. Okay, with that, motion to adjourn.
Ritz will motion to adjourn.
Marshall's second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Okay, good night, everybody, have a great week.